We call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to city council prior to this meeting. Can I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Close session. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's one item for closed session. That is to confer with real property negotiators under government code section 54.9, 56.8. The property is a public utility easement located on APM 231805 and 231806, located on the east side of Garden Highway at the terminus of Oswald Road, toward 107 Garden Highway, Yuba City Council 295991. The negotiator is Diana Langley, City Manager. The negotiating parties are your shitting, your pee, and your hotty. And under negotiation is the price in terms of payment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session. Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Thank you. This evening, we are joined by Pastor Johnny Burke. There he is, who will lead us in the invocation. He's from New Beginnings Westerland Church. And then we will stay standing, and the pledge will be led by our Vice Mayor Sean Harris.
I think every pastor gets a chance to pray here, has to think about what to say, and thought about the words of Paul when writing to his apprentice Timothy. And I'm kind of lazy, so I brought my son to read the passage for you. So he's going to read the passage.
First Timothy, chapter 2, verses 1 through 4. I urge you first of all to pray for all people. Ask God to help them, intercreed on their behalf, and give thanks for them. Pray this way for kings and all who are in authorities, so that we can live peaceful and quiet lives marked by godliness and dignity. This is a good, this is good and pleases God, our Savior, who wants everyone to be saved and to understand the truth.
Will you pray with me? Lord, this morning, or that's evening, I should say, Lord, we pray over all the people of Yuba City and the greater Sutter area, that you would be blessing this area, that you would continue to call people in relationship with you. Lord, I ask for prayers for our mayor and council, as they are tasked with making big decisions every single day that will benefit this area. Lord, will you bless them with knowledge and wisdom tonight, give them direction in all things? Will you bless the staff that prepares and does so much of the work in this area to make better lives for the people of Yuba City and the greater Sutter area? Lord, tonight, we ask you that you would guide this meeting. We ask for peace and calm, and that you would give us ears to hear each other and hear hearts as we continue to make this a better community. We ask all these things tonight in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
What allegiance is to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you, Johnny. That was a nice touch. Okay. City Attorney's report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Seeing no agenda of modifications, seeing none. We will begin with ceremonial presentations. Number one, Police Officer of the Year, Scott Rounds' proclamation. I'd like to invite Detective Scott Rounds to come forward and for the council to meet me up front, please. So it looks like you've brought some friends with you. Just a few, okay. Well, first of all, thank you for keeping us safe, the community safe. And it goes for everybody else in the room who fall into that category. You answered the call, and thank you for that. And it looks like you join a very elite group by winning this award, and I hope you appreciate that. I know you do. So in recognition for the selection of the, as the 2022 Yuba City Police Department Officer of the Year, whereas Scott Rounds began his career in law enforcement in 1999 as a deputy for the Yuba County Sheriff's Office, and in May 2014, Scott was hired as a police officer by the city of Yuba City. And in 2015, Scott was assigned to the Investigations Unit, where he was, he has demonstrated compassion for victims and for a deep desire to bring offenders to justice. And Detective Rounds has worked tirelessly on some of the most difficult cases, including homicides and human trafficking. And Detective Rounds has a passion for investigations and is the department's subject matter expert. He has participated in presentations, along with other experts, to discuss the complexity of human trafficking and promote advocacy for its victims. And whereas he was recognized in 2022 as the Yuba City Police Department's Officer of the Year for his selfless dedication to his peers and the citizens of Yuba City. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the Yuba City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council and citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Detective Scott Rounds on this occasion of his selection as the 2022 Yuba City Police Department's Officer of the Year. Let's give him a hand. Would you like to say anything?
I probably have a loud enough voice to knock you in the microphone. I'm honored and truly humbled that my peers saw this award, that I could fill that award this year. I truly am, and I really want to thank everybody here, everybody from the department, my family and my wife, even my niece, who is wearing sunglasses. Thank you. Thank you very much. Very, very honored.
Well deserved. Okay, don't go too far. It looks like we are fortunate to have Laura Nicholson from Senator Nilo's office to present a joint resolution on behalf of Senator Nilo and Assemblyman Gallagher.
Good evening. It is an honor and a privilege to be here tonight, on behalf of Senator Nilo and Assemblyman Gallagher, to present you with this joint resolution, recognizing you as the Yuba City Police Department Officer of the Year, thanking you for all that you do, all that is here, all that is not here, and protecting and serving the citizens of Yuba City. So thank you.
Okay. And we're not done yet. We're not done yet. I hope you've got a big wall in your office. We are also joined by David Morgan, on behalf of Congressman Lamafa.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, city of Yuba City. It is our pleasure to present you with the special congressional recognition for the work that you've done protecting the city of Yuba City, the work you've done solving crimes, doing everything that makes our city special. So we really appreciate it. We thank you for your service, and we hope for many more years of service of continued making Yuba City one of the bright spots in our area. So we're very, we're very happy to give this to you, and thank you very much. We appreciate it. Keep it up.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. We have one more. Senator Dromes? Drum, sorry about that. You think I'd know by now. I apologize.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council and our city manager for allowing me some time, and Chief Baker. So I was sharing with my club today that you were going to be getting Police Officer of the Year, and everybody said out loud, "I'm not surprised." So I just wanted, but that's the impact you've done for our members. You have not only been an expert in our club in your extensive knowledge in human trafficking, but you've educated surrounding Sir Optimist Clubs on what that you do and what they can do in their communities to bring awareness to human trafficking. We are here to say today to say congratulations on your accomplishment, well deserved. And on behalf of the club, we'd like to present you with Sir Optimist International of Marysville, Yuba City presents this certificate to Detective Scott Rounds in appreciation of his commitment and dedication to fighting modern slavery and human trafficking. Thank you for all you do.
Okay. Need a little? Okay. I would now like to invite Chief Baker and members of our Yuba City Police Department to come forward. This is for the National Police Week proclamation. I certainly feel safe. Well, once again, I think I said it earlier, but I'll say it again. It's really, it's really an honor to be in my position to be able to present this on behalf of the city and the council. The men and the women in your apartment continually make us proud and our community proud, and we hear this daily, and I hope that's conveyed to you when that happens, because it's certainly relevant. So this is Yuba City Police Department, National Police Week, May 14, 2020, excuse me, May 14 to 20, 2023. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, an annual observance to honor the nation's fallen law enforcement officers as men and women of courage, judgment, and dedication. And National Police Week, National Police Week is a time of reflection and appreciation for the ultimate sacrifices made by law enforcement who were killed or disabled in the line of duty. And it is important that all citizens understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property. And whereas the city of Yuba City is grateful for the day-to-day heroism of our officers, both past and present, as well as their families, who have given so much of their lives in service to our community. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council and citizens who serve, do hereby recognize and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Further, the city council of the city of Yuba City wishes to honor all the police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have remained, who have become disabled in the performance of duty. May we always remember their tremendous sacrifice and the loved ones they left behind. Thank you. Chief, you got any words?
Thank you, Mayor and council. First and foremost, thank you to the folks that are up here to my left and right for everything you do every day to protect the citizens of our community, and to the folks that weren't able to make it. Thank you to the council, the city manager for the continued support, and more importantly, to the community. I tell people all the time, we live in the best community and support their law enforcement hands down. So thank you.
Thank you. Number three, National Public Works Week proclamation. I'd like to invite Public Works Director Ben Moody and members of our Public Works Department to come forward, please. Well, this is another part of our family here, and this group really represents our city well. I know during this last winter, and I've talked to a lot of your folks, you guys were just running from emergency to emergency, and your community understands that and appreciates all the hard work you folks do. So having said that, National Public Works Week, May 21 through 27, 2023. Whereas the city of Yuba City Public Works Department is proud to create and maintain the vital infrastructure of the city, including construction and maintenance of transportation facilities, water treatment and supply, wastewater treatment and collection, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated, excuse me, first responders and engineers, managers, and employees to all levels of government. And public works connects all of us through infrastructure and service, enhancing the life, the quality of life for the communities these professionals serve. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council of the city of Yuba City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as Public Works Week, and ask that citizens and civic organizations alike acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public work service and recognize the contributions that the men and women of the public works make in our daily lives. Thank you. Mr. Moody, do you have any words?
You know, just a quick thank you to the council for your support and to the team. Really, these guys and teammates, guys and gals with the team, they're keeping the road safe, the water and the sewer flowing, and the lights on for our community, and so it's well deserved. Thank you.
Okay, we got Purple Heart Trail proclamation. I'd like to invite Mr. Brock Bowen on behalf of the National Purple Heart Committee to come forward. How are you, sir? Thanks for being here. This is Vice Commander Brock A. Bowen, correct? Bowen, I apologize. City of Yuba City proclamation supporting the Purple Heart Trail, whereas the National Purple Heart Trail was established in 1992 for the purpose of commemorating and honoring men and women who have been wounded or killed in combat while serving in the United States Armed Forces. And the United, excuse me, the National Public Heart Trail courses its way across the vast majority of the United States. Over the highways, excuse me, over the years, the legislature designated portions of the interstate highway routes 580, Highway 101, State Highway Route 223, as California's selections for the National Purple Heart Trail. Whereas the city of Yuba City, American Legion Post 705, wishes to continue the Purple Heart Trail program within the city limits of the city of Yuba City for State Highway 20 and 99. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Yuba City does support the endeavor of Vice Commander Brock A. Bowen, who has taken the lead for the Yuba City American Legion to bring the Purple Heart Trail through the city of Yuba City. Let's give him a hand. Do you have a few words?
Thank you for this. This is my second try. I've spent five years getting the Purple Heart Trail through the city of Marysville on Highway 20 and Highway 70. Part of that was due to the COVID. I lost two years there, but it took three other years to get it done. Hopefully, this will be done within a year. I've been through it once, so I got, I know all the stumbling blocks now. It's not easy working with the state government. But anyway, thank you for your support, and thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
If you might allow me, maybe a little known thought here, but, or notice of information. Mr. Bowen was a former volunteer firefighter with the city of Yuba City, who took one potential firefighter under his wing many years ago, and for that, I'm still very, very thankful. He went on to serve as a county fire chief as well, out of Station 8, which is down in Oswald Tudor. So he's very dedicated to the community, and I just wanted to make sure that we recognize the fact that he served the citizens of Yuba City and the fire department as well. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Public communication, appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taking on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other item within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submit written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes within, to public, excuse me, within five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public? Any public comments? Seeing none, moving along. Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that the council votes on motion items unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent counter for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on consent counter items six through 14? Any public comments?
I have one, and that is the water tower.
Could you go over there and speak in the podiums, sir? Thank you.
I just read about it here tonight. I'm not really sure what you're going to do, but the water tower is being removed. Is that correct?
Refurbished.
Mr. Moody, do you want to speak to this?
So the item before you tonight is in relation to remediating the lead, so basically stripping off the lead paint and repainting it.
Copy. Thank you. Any further public comments on calendar items six through 14? Seeing none, I will bring this back to council for comment or action. The mayor moved to approve the consent items six through 14. I can. I've got a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden, and it sounds like I had a second from Councilmember Shaw. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. That was a good question, by the way. Okay, moving along. Business items. Number 15, introduce an ordinance regulating trespassing on private property and public nudity. This is presented by Stephen Thornton, Police Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The intent of these ordinances is a trespassing and nudity ordinance. It's actually two separate ordinances. The purpose for these are to support property owners' rights within our community, reduce the number of calls for service with the police department, also to further provide a path of enforcement for habitual behavior and offenders, address individuals exposing themselves in public view, and to help provide a peaceful and safe environment for our community members. In the background, numerous individuals entering the private property business and refusing to leave. We're seeing an increase in this, further increase in disrupting businesses by being belligerent or aggressive when asked to leave or in trying to remain in businesses or on private or public. or on private or public property. Increase in the number of individuals exposing themselves throughout the community, whether it be on public property or with private property open to public businesses. Some quick statistical information. In 2022, concerning trespassing, the police department responded to 312 calls for service. Out of that, 124 reports were taken and 88 arrests were made. Since January 1 through April of this year, we were at 114 calls for service, 49 reports, and 27 arrests. As far as additional exposure, during 2022, we handled 86 calls for service, eight reports with eight arrests. From January 1 to April of '23, we're at 18 calls for service, five reports and two arrests. Trespassing ordinance is unlawful to remain on private property or businesses. Part of this is, and this is a brief of the entire ordinance, must be given a notice to trespass served by the owner or their agent prior to being cited for this. Notice of trespass shall be documented with the Yuba City Police Department, so they have to let us know first. The public nudity, no person shall be nude upon public property, private property visible to public property, or private property open to the public. For our code, nudity means any exposure of the breasts, genitals, perineum, or the anal region. The fiscal impact, there should be no negative fiscal impact to this. There may be a small revenue increase due to citations being issued over time. The recommendation would be amend Title V of the Yuba City Municipal Code by the adoption of Chapter 27, Sections 5-25.010 through 5-25.030, and the adoption of Chapter 26, Sections 526.010 through 526-040. The alternatives would be do not adopt the resolution and provide the staff with direction. I left out a slide for questions.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing for the introduction of an ordinance regulating trespassing on private property and public nudity is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Oh, is it on? There we go. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Andy Drowne, and I just, my husband and I own the Happy Viking. And so it's 7:41 Plumas Street, in case you don't know. But I wanted to thank the hard work for the law enforcement. I'm sure that this was probably a long process, but I thank you for doing that. As a small business owner, it provides us a little bit of relief with the last couple of years of what the things we've had to deal with, besides run our business, keep our doors open, make sure we take care of our employees, and all of the post-pandemic stuff. So thank you.
Do we have any further comments from the public on this item? Hearing no further comments, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Chief and Officer Kosky and Lieutenant. It's been a long process, and this came on our radar about a year and a half, two years ago. And I was blown away at how I found out your hands were tied in a lot of these situations. And our job as a city is protect the rights of our citizens and their property. So I just want to say thank you, because I know a lot of man-hours went into this and a lot of thought did. And just keep doing the great job you're doing, and thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we introduce an ordinance of the city council of Yuba City regulating trespassing and public nudity by amending Title V, Public Welfare Morals and Conduct of the City of Yuba City Municipal Code by the Chapter 25, Sections 5-25.010 through 5-25.030, trespass on private property, and Chapter 26, Sections 5-26.010 through 5-26.040, public nudity prohibited by title only, and waive the first reading. I have a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Pasquale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Number 16, Montana Bachi Ball Courts Plans and Specifications, presented by Josh Wolf, Associate Engineer. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, I've come to talk to you about the Montana Bachi Ball Courts Approval and Plans, Specification, and Estimate. So just for a little bit of background on the location, we are looking at Sambranon Park here, just to the east of the proposed construction area. We have Gray Avenue running north and south. And then to the south of this location, we have Gray Avenue Middle School. What we're proposing is the construction of four regulation-sized bachi ball courts with add alternate options for perimeter, concrete, flatwork, and either shaded or non-shaded steel benches. So for a little bit of background on this project, we have to go back quite a ways. In 1968, the Yubusutter Special Olympics was founded by four members or four families in the community that had children with special needs. One of those was the Montana family. In 1980, the Montana family donated funds to construct Butchy's Pool, which was a staple in our community and ran from 1980 to 2016. And then in 2020, the Montana family's estate plan included a $300,000 donation to the Yubusutter Special Olympics. Moving forward, in fall of 2021, the Yubusutter Special Olympics approached the city for the construction of new bachi courts with these donated funds. In September of 2022, the city council approved a donation and facility use agreement to accept these funds for the construction of the project. And then in winter of 2022, 23, staff began to design on the new bachi courts. So through the design process, staff looked at a couple different recommendations for locations, one of which would be Gauche Aquatic Park, and the other would be Sambranon Park. Now, Sambranon Park, between the two, became the favorite option for three variables: cost, visibility, and increased usage. So on the cost factor, Sambranon was quite a bit more cost-effective due to the fact that the site is pretty level, whereas the location at the Gap had quite a bit of a slope, so import soil would be needed to be brought in in order to construct the courts. And bachi courts are very flat, so to maintain that, we'd need to bring in quite a bit of material. Also, at the Gap, the facility would need eight-foot perimeter fence around the courts for security and for safety around the pools. And then this project's also easier for contractors to come in and work, being right off of Gray Avenue, plenty of parking space, and a lot of space to park their equipment during construction. In terms of visibility, it's located on one of our main roadways, Gray Avenue, and it's going to be in a highly visible location, whereas at the Gap, it was tucked away, the proposed location was tucked away behind some of the play structures and some of the pool structures, so it wouldn't be as apparent to the public. This location would be more visible and likely would lead into our third factor, which would be increased usage. The increased usage at this park would foster more of a family-friendly environment, coupled with the new improvements that have been going into the park the last few years, the pickleball courts, new playground equipment, and the new restroom building that's going in now. Having all these new features, including these bachi courts, will likely bring more families in and create a more family-friendly environment at the park. So what we project for the timeline is that we would advertise for bid in May of '23. We would award the construction contract in June of '23. Construction would begin in July, and then the project completion would be later this fall, September timeframe. The fiscal impact, the base bid schedule is $301,000, or $301,010. We have a few add alternate items, which would include four-foot perimeter concrete paths that would help with ADA access. Also, an option for either eight six-foot steel benches or eight six-foot steel benches with canopies. And then the funding available right now is $300,000, which was donated to the city. At the time of bid opening and award, staff will propose funding recommendations. So we've actually gotten some feedback on this. The original alternative would be to instruct staff to modify the plans and specifications, to adjust the scope and budget. There's been some question brought into factor about the construction of the courts. The courts we're proposing to construct would be, would have a concrete base with a sports turf material on top, so a green sports turf, kind of like what we have at Kingwood Park, although these would also have a 5-millimeter rubber pad as to help with rolling and absorbing the balls when they drop. The question has been brought into play, though, that a lot of traditional bachi courts are constructed with crushed oyster shells. Staff went the route of proposing the concrete courts with the sports turf initially due to lower maintenance levels and longevity, but if there is interest, staff would be open to also adding an add alternate to the bid for the construction with the use of crushed oyster shells for the surfacing. Say that 10 times fast. So with that, the recommendation, staff's recommendation would be to adopt a resolution, adopting a CEQA Class 1 categorical exemption, adopting the plans and specifications. And if council would like, we could also modify the recommendation to add alternative for the oyster shell surfacing, and then authorizing the advertisement for bids on the Montana Bachi Courts project. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, sir. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
Hello, good evening. This is Heather Essman. I live in Yuba City on the corner of Lincoln and Danborn, I remember that. So thank you for getting this close to being done. I do think that it's a bit unfortunate that we've decided to do this during the busiest time, where the park would be most used. And also, this park is actually pretty well-used on the weekends already, so I'm not quite sure how that's going to impact. I don't know if you drive by there on the weekends, but you can see that the parking lot's pretty much completely full on most weekends. So I'm not quite sure how that's going to impact if somebody decides to have a tournament or something like that, and then they have other activities, because this is one of the parks that we have rental capabilities for families if they wanted to have activities. It's the same with Gauche Park, I understand that. But I just wish we had started this just a little bit earlier, because this is really going to impact particularly where it's located, some of what the kids want to do on the weekend. But there was also something about with Gauche Park as opposed to this park was the equipment. You were able to go in, if you wanted to borrow equipment, you could just go into the pool and ask for equipment and loan that out. That was the idea. However, I'm not sure what's going to happen with this situation. You can loan equipment from the senior center, but who's going to go to the senior center and then come all the way, that's just way too far away. At least Kingswood Park, I think. Kingwood. Kingwood Park was relatively close to the senior center, so it wasn't that much of a distance to go. But I don't know what the plan is for that. And please, they need shade. It's just way too hot during the summer. And as you can see there, I don't know what's going to happen with the trees, but even if they do replant trees, it's going to take forever for those to grow in. So please, at least bid it and consider it. The same thing with the oyster shell. There's no reason why you can't at least add it and then consider it afterwards to see if there's a situation where you might be able to afford that, because the other ones, we do already have turf, and it's rarely used. And I think that might be one of the reasons, is because it's just not what their typical surface is supposed to be for people who want to practice for that type of thing. So like I said, please just consider adding those elements to the bid. You could always take them back out later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public on this item? Okay, I'll take, I'll bring the matter back to the council.
Through the mayor. Thank you, guys, for all your work on this, Brad and your team. Can you say, what are we using again for the possible alternate bid? I just want to hear you say it.
So for the, yeah.
I'm teasing.
Most oyster shells, there you go.
I'm teasing. No, really getting back to the base of this, and not meaning the base of the things there, but the Montana family has done a tremendous amount for this community. And they cared about the special needs kids. And I drive by Kingwood Park every day, and I can tell you that it is used constantly, and the special needs kids are there all the time. And they love bachi ball. And you add this in with what we just did, the dedication the other day with Connor's Corner. I'm glad to see parks in rec, reaching out to the disabled kids in our community that can utilize this. I don't understand bachi ball as far as what's the difference between the turf and the shells. I'm not against getting the bid to find out what the cost-effectiveness is of it, but we do have to have shades. And is it possible, Kingwood is kind of in the shade until the late evening, and then it's blaring in the sun. And I don't know if it's appropriate to have shade over the bachi ball courts or not. You know, four or five poles and some big, you know, net, something to knock the sun down. I mean, that would be a possibility, just to help. I would be curious to see what that could do. Not sure if it's legal or not, but that's for you guys to figure out, because I don't know the rules to bachi ball. But I love the project. I think we've got a great location, and hopefully it'll be a big draw like the pickleball courts are. So I'd like to see the park overflowing.
Josh, in that vein, if we were going to prioritize the options, in my opinion, I think ADA access is super important, because it keeps in theme with the entire project. And I'm just not sure, we haven't discussed those options until right now. I don't really know where the money would be coming from, but I think we have to have the money, because it's going to be something that's hardwired in the project. We have to know if we're doing it or not from before we break ground. Is that correct?
Yes.
And all of those options, well, first and third, I agree that definitely shade would be an issue for there. So we have another 75K, we got to figure out something out. I don't know anything about what it would cost for that. Crushed oyster shells, but you know, why not just look into it, you know? I have some concerns with the oyster shells somehow not ending up where they're supposed to be repeatedly. So it might be an O and M type issue. I think that's why it's so practical to go with the turf, even though it isn't the classic, traditional regulation way to do it, that's the oyster shells. But anyway, my opinion is, if we're going to go with an option, we can find the money. The ADA should be, in my opinion, the first priority, and then go from there.
Through the mayor, I don't think it's going to cost us anymore to alternate or add the alternate bids. However, I would tell you, as one of the Budget Ad hoc Committee members, this project has come up during our discussions, and has come up during our discussions, and, you know, right now, we have the 300K available. We haven't, obviously, we, we need to come back to the full council if we were going to look at any additions. But the shade, I think, is important. The steel benches, I think, are going to be durable. As far as crushed oysters, I played a little bit of bocce ball, I don't think, I don't think it really matters. Maybe it does to those competitive folks, so, you know, if that's, again, if that's something, but that's going to be a maintenance issue, I think.
Since I brought up the oyster shells, it's really not a maintenance thing, gentlemen. If you've ever seen road base or the granite, crushed granite, and how hard that gets, the only thing you'd probably have is people that want to play on the regulation surface that are competitive, you would have a draw for that. They would probably have to bring their own rakes and such with them, but somebody that is out of competitive would do that anyway, and they would bring their own equipment as well. I brought this up because it, I've been doing Special Olympics tennis for 23 years, and I see the enthusiasm and use of the bocce, and it's, it's huge. It's huge in Special Olympics. They had it UC Davis for years, and now I have to travel to Santa Clara to do the tennis project there, down there. And I, I just, I brought it up because true bocce ball people want, they don't want that carpet. It's carpet. And it's, that's, that's why I brought it up, so. I, I too, the shade thing's probably important, and it looks like this location is the old, where the old Yuba City pool used to be. Spent many hour there at Gray Avenue School, going over and swimming during PE, so I think it's a great addition. The Motna family had a vision for Special Olympics, and I think it's, it's something we need, this is something we need to back at 100%, so, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Well, this certainly lines up with one of council's priorities, and that is quality of life. I didn't think when I was going to wake up this morning that we'd be talking about oyster shells. I didn't see that one coming, but I just learned something, so I, I take that home. And I do remember being in that swimming pool, and then after the swimming pool, it was a volleyball court, right? Was it sand volleyball court out there as well? Yeah. Okay, so, yes, I mean, and it, and it looks like, according to your timeline, you know, if we say go on this, it looks like you guys can put this out pretty quickly, which is, which is nice. Only concern I would have about construction, constructing a shade structure there is I think in the past, they've had issues with individuals climbing on structures at, specifically at San Brandon Park. So that'd be my concern. But, but this certainly has my support. And having said that, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor. I do have a couple of other quick, quick questions. Is it possible, well, anything's possible, but could we bid out all the options, and then going with what my fellow council member said about our budget and the upcoming workshop and stuff coming on, some of this stuff could be done in phases. I mean, we could basically get the courts in, have the, possibly the benches and things, get that going, and then as funds come available, I mean, it would not be difficult to put shade structure over this at some future date if we have the funds and such come available. For me, I would like to see us look at what the total package is going to be, and then figure out how we can accomplish it with what funds we have. And it may, it may have to be phase one, phase two.
Yeah, that's definitely possible. We can put together a bid schedule, or multiple bid schedules, one with the base items to complete the courts and then all other items, and kind of carve away from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Another possibility, we'd have, just out of respect, i- if nothing else, we could have to check with the Motna family, see if they would mind, but as far as shade structures being installed after we build the, the main courts, we might possibly be able to reach out to some of the service clubs and whatnot for a project on those, too. So that might be another option.
Ready, Mr. Mayor?
Ready.
All right. Through the mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution adopting a CEQA Class 1 categorical exemption, approving the plans and specification, including all the council recommendations this evening for bidding and such, and authorize advertisement for bids for the Motna Bocce Ball Courts project.
I have a motion by Councilmember Shaw, and a second from Vice Mayor Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to future agenda items, this is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Reports and communications, the following reports and communication items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to it on a subsequent agenda. Number 18, city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor. So I have a few things to report. One of the first items that I want to address is the ribbon cutting for Maple Park, Collins Corner. And I'm just going to read a portion of an email that Brad sent to his staff, because I thought it really summarized well what the Parks Team and Recreation Team did. So Brad wrote, "Parks Team, you guys did an amazing job installing the play features, fencing, concrete installation of the Fibar and new sod. It looked amazing and professionally done. You gentlemen worked your tails off to make everything look incredible. Kaitlin and Garrett, which were the parents, were so appreciative and touched by your performance as a team throughout the last few weeks. They felt like each and every one of you cared about your work and their story. Recreation Team, thank you for implementing all the logistics for the ribbon cutting ceremony. You made it look easy, and the mayor appreciated all the communication prior to the ceremony. I know I'm preaching to the choir, but putting on an event looks easy to everyone until something goes wrong. So there was no criticism to be made at the last Friday." So thank you to Parks and Recreation for all of their time and dedication to such a special project for the city. And then moving on to the Police Department, they had the Citizen Academy graduation last week, and I don't think people understand the value and of that academy in terms of, it's a, I believe, a 12 or 13-week program. And to dedicate that amount of time, number one, from the citizens is really impressive, but to be able to learn in depth about our Police Department and what they do is awesome, and out of that, we often get volunteers. And then last Saturday, we had the YCPD jamboree, where citizens were able to come out and look at the equipment and see demonstrations and see, also hear from other, there was a senior center booth there as well. We have a peace officers memorial ceremony tomorrow at the PD at 10:00 AM. And then we have a budget workshop next Tuesday here in the council chambers at 5:30 PM. On Friday, the mayor, vice mayor and I attended a ceremony at Future Toyota. They received the President's Award, which requires a lot of dedication. There's many factors that go into receiving that award. It's sales, it's customer satisfaction, it's the service that they provide, so congratulations to Future Toyota. Also, at the Yuba Center Economic Development Corporation meeting, they noted that they worked with the California Pumpkin Growers to secure Bishop's Pumpkin Farm to host the National Pumpkin weigh-in on September 30th of this year. Why is that important to Yuba City? Because that's going to bring people to our community and fill our hotels. So, and also provide national exposure to our area, so we're excited to see that. The Merriman Village application was submitted for Home Key 3.0, so that came to council at the last meeting for the joint application, and Habitat for Humanity and Thurmond Consulting submitted that application. And then finally, this is a topic that's come before council, and that's related to mobile vendors. So I just want to acknowledge Development Services staff, code enforcement, also the, the work of Sutter County as well, the Ag Department and Environmental Health in assistance to address mobile vendors. We are going to be undertaking an educational campaign to explain to the public why it's important that we enforce our ordinances related to mobile vendors, not only from a collection of sales tax standpoint from the state and for the city, but in also health and safety. Ben is going to be coordinating a workshop for the restaurants, for the restaurant owners to come in and, number one, vent to us, and then, number two, give us the opportunity to explain what we're doing to address mobile vendors. Also, in talking to Steve Smith, the county wants to cooperate with us as well. Shannon and his team are working on updating our mobile vendor ordinance, and so over the next few months, you're going to see the kickoff of an education campaign, which will then transition into enforcement. So we're excited to see that, and we ask, I know there's a lot of frustrated restaurant owners out there that feel like the city's not doing anything, and we are. And so we'll be kicking that off soon. So thank you.
Thank you, city manager. City council reports, this evening, we will begin with Councilmember Boon Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager reported, the Budget Ad Hoc Committee has been very active over the last, and as you well know yourself, sir, has been very active in preparation for the budget workshop. Staff's put in a lot of work. And to, to Spencer Morrison, he's got some new folks on his team, and, you know, he's leading them adequately through with all of the staff's help, so I, I think it's important. And I encourage anybody who's, who has a concern about the direction of the city of Yuba City and its financial situation, you might want to attend the budget workshop. I attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, a couple of things of note there. Number one is the city of Gridley has approved the, their portion or their piece of a potential fee increase for the, the, goodness, mayor, you're going to have to help me with this. This is the East Sutter Bypass Levy Project.
That sounds right.
Okay. So really, what's happening here is all, all the entities that are going to be involved in this would need to agree to, to help fund the repair of that bypass levy, which is the one that, that we see here to our west, which is now, which I mentioned is the East Levy. Also, I had reported in last meeting that, that Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency was in the process of, of selling off some, some credits. That's hit a tiny bit of a stumbling block, so we're still working through that, but that could potentially see funds going to Sabu FKA, and that could obviously lessen the amount that might be necessary for that East Levy repair. In Lafco, we accepted the resignation of the Lafco Director. He'll have another 60 days. We have a special meeting on Thursday to begin the process of selecting, a process for the executive director. I'll more report on that at our next meeting. Did attend the jamboree, thought that, thanks for the senior commission folks there, borrowed some of their shade for a minute, but it, it looked like it was a pretty well-attended event. I want to thank the mayor and city staff. This afternoon, Jenna McKay was able to use our office. She's the person with the Jenna McKay Foundation, which is human trafficking. She was invited to do a, a interview with a local news station out of Sacramento and needed a place to be interviewed, so checked with the mayor, checked with the city manager, and we were able to allow her to use our office for that. So look for that interview. I'm going to let Councilperson Shaw talk about the event and how that might impact our canines. And the other thing is, is just, you know, again, as you go around, around the city and you see, whether it's public works, police, fire, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on, and probably something that, that's exciting to me who's been around a bit is the dirt moving that's going on over on, off of, in the harder area. You know, finally, we're, we're looking at some commercial development and some housing in that area, so I'd like to see those things continue to move forward with that. And Project, Project Hope, we're looking at a 60-to-90-day turnaround on the application that we submitted. So our fingers are crossed that perhaps the state sees it fit to, to provide some funding for us for the Project Hope in Merriman Village. That is all.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, mayor. I attended the jamboree early on, because it was getting quite hot. I had a snow cone, and I was really thankful for all the people that participated. It was, I think it was pretty well-attended. I stayed for about an hour or so, I think, and there was people coming in, so, yeah. And I also attended the Sutter County Fireman's, volunteer fireman's foundation, and was anointed mayor by the, it's amazing what $2, $2 to the right people will do for you. But anyway, I had to correct them with that, but other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's start off with GSEC. I attended their annual event, which is a culmination of all the work that's gone on in the greater Sacramento area over the, the past 12 months. It works side-by-side with, with SACOG and how they are attracting businesses and such to the area. And businesses are coming, and Sacramento region, which we're a part of, is the top region in California for growth and development. So we're still working on that, trying to see how do we draw them up that 99 corridor even more to make Yuba City even more attractive to them. And, you know, we're not going to have the 1 million square foot ready turnkey locations like Bosch just announced in Roseville. They're going to invest about $1 billion, but they have all of the former HP plants and stuff down there that they're able to just hop in and convert over. So we're going to be doing everything we can to bring them as much as we can to Yuba City, because we need better-paying jobs, so that'll equate to a better quality of life up here, so we need to be attracting those. The two groups, Brad, he was in, there he is, you and your team in that email, Diana put it spot-on, could not be said better. That young man left an imprint on me a year ago when I was mayor. And I'm just going to share for just a minute, but I get an email a year ago in January when I'm mayor that this five-year-old child has a terminal illness, but he wants to do something for other kids. And when Brad called me, it was a, it was never a question of are we going to do this, but how do we get it done? Do we just get a bunch of people and raise money? Does the city kick in? So Brad, to you, the entire team at the city, from a former mayor, thank you for seeing that through, because that was a project that we couldn't fail on, and you guys knocked it out of the park. So sincere, thank you. To our fire department, honored to give the blessing over the new truck, and I hope that it protects the city and protects every man and woman that is associated with that. And chief, thank you for doing that, and thank you for allowing the entire council and myself to be a part of that. Very special, you're starting new traditions with your department, and many thank-yous and props to you guys. You guys are awesome. One other thing I've been working on is, and the council's been made aware of this, I'm working with our local churches. You're going to start seeing things come up to where the Christian churches in the area want to step up and show the community what they're to be known for, not just what they're against. So we've already had a couple of churches come on board, been reaching out to a couple of different nonprofits, and the churches will be conducting interviews in the future to take on some projects that are shovel-ready, and we're looking at that occurring in October. Tentative date set for the actual day is October 7th, and so more information will be popping up, so if you hear about it, you know what's going on with that. The event, it's that time again, this is the 11th year, and we got our homegrown country platinum recording artist, Tyler Rich. Most of us remember him. I remember him when he was a waiter at Red Robin, and he comes back every year and does a concert, but it's much more than a concert. We raise money for the local nonprofits and make donations. This year, the recipients of those are going Uh, this year, the recipients of those are going to be TIP, which my fellow council member sets on their board. Um, thank you for making us aware of that need and, oh, is it Sean? Oh, both of you. Thank you, guys. So, uh, it's you, it's our Yuba City Canine Officer Association and then, uh, we all like baseball in our community, so we're doing something for, um, the Wheatland baseball, high school baseball. And, uh, it's not, uh, one of us, it's a group of us and, uh, the tribe and the Hardrock are right at the center of that. So thank you all. If you don't have tickets, go online and get them, come out and be a part. For the most part, the money's been raised. Come enjoy, uh, one of our locals that likes to come back to our community. Uh, things coming up on the horizon, uh, for me this week, uh, I will be meeting with our new executive director from RWMA tomorrow to start going over the budget. Uh, we have the transit meeting on, uh, Thursday as well as RWMA. Um, and I believe that we will have RWMA coming in in the future to talk about the future of RWMA and the finances. Uh, for those of you that aren't aware, we split that away from transit, um, last, this past year with a new director and so we have to get our footing underneath us because we got big things to accomplish like compliance with 1383. So that's what I have coming up this week and, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris.
Yeah, a lot of stuff has already been mentioned. I won't get into that, but the, uh, I did have the chance to attend the Cinco de Mayo celebration down in, um, the river bottoms put on by, um, Aha. And they, uh, they really had a good, uh, showing out there. They had the, um, mariachis and the, uh, they told me the word for it and I pronounced, practiced pronouncing it, but I, I'm gonna fail to do it again, so I'm not gonna say it, but those guys that dress up really fancy and the horses dance while they're riding them. And then they had the, uh, that, there's a movie, uh, called Coco and, um, they had the kid that was the voice of the kid in that movie there and he was singing some songs and stuff, so the kids enjoyed doing that and seeing and meeting him in person. So that was, uh, of course, the food goes without saying. It's pretty awesome, always is. I too attended the fire department push-in ceremony for the new ladder truck and I, and I share, um, councilmember Shaw's, uh, sentiment that it's really nice to see, um, particularly in agencies like, like the fire department who are really, really deep in a tradition. Um, I'm not gonna say reviving it, but taking advantage of the opportunity to continue the, uh, the tradition, um, goes back to the days of when they would back in the, uh, the apparatus into the station because they're pushed by horses or pulled by horses, so they had to push them in the station. So that was pretty interesting and, uh, and good to be a part of. The jamboree, of course, um, not surprising given the track record with, with this department, but it was a really huge success and clearly it took a huge, um, amount of teamwork. Um, I made the rounds and talked to several people, not everybody I wanted to talk to, but, um, um, I did get to several and it was very, uh, very positive thing, which is what's always, you know, it's one of those things where it's always a win-win, so it's nice. Also got to see a really, some really nice equipment I didn't know we had. The, uh, and then Collins Corner, of course, um, I, I just be preaching to the choir how wonderful that is for the community and, and the, and the story behind it is phenomenal and, uh, proud to be a part of that. Also, um, there's other, a few other meetings I didn't have the opportunity to attend because of some things going on in my personal life and so I wanna thank my, my fellow council members for filling in for me when I wasn't able to be present. So thank you very much. It's not over, but, uh, I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, we've been busy with the budget and, um, I gotta thank, um, our council member, Boomgarden for that and city staff. It goes back to our, uh, responsibility to go through that budget item by item to see what we need going forward and it's, uh, it's a long process, but, um, it's our responsibility to do it, so thank you. Uh, we did have a special meeting, um, on the camp, uh, UC, um, high school campus in the gym, um, to commemorate, uh, the centennial graduating class from UC High School. And so three or four of the classes got to participate in their first city council meeting, which was exciting, which was attended by Congressman Lamafa. Um, we also, I also participated in the, um, graduation of the, um, police department citizen academy. Thank you, chief, for, uh, for inviting me to that. Uh, the push-in was mentioned, that was my first, uh, exposure to a, a, uh, fire, uh, fire truck push-in, which was exciting to have, um, their sponsor from the community and I'd love to see all the kids that came out for that. That was nice. That was really nice. Um, something I've been working on is a, um, working with a company called CGI to promote Yuba City and, um, they provide a video platform, uh, video platform on our website and so they were in town this week going to different, um, businesses, different locations to highlight how special our city, city and community is and so I'm looking forward to seeing what that looks like when it's done. Sabuca was mentioned earlier, or we're pursuing, continuing to pursue, um, grants for, for ongoing projects. Uh, mosquito, it's gonna be, um, the bad news, it's gonna be a bad mosquito season because of all the water, um, especially down the river bottom, so they're prepping for that with, uh, aerial, aerial flights and service requests, so, um, they predict it's gonna be a long, long summer. I participated in the ribbon cutting for Farm West, also at the Toyota Future Award, which was nice to see them get recognized for that. Collins Corner was, uh, mentioned earlier and, um, I agree, that was, uh, quite a feat by staff and our parks department, um, and it was great to see the community come out and support that. Um, and you had mentioned earlier, um, the question why, why don't, why we didn't start on a project sooner. It just stopped raining about a week ago, I think, right? Um, and those of us know that, I mean, it, it is, but now that it's stopped raining, you see a lot of activity in the city, whether it's on Bridge Street, which is exciting, or over there, um, on, on Harder, you see the, um, there's a lot of dirt getting moved and so a lot of things moving in the right, right direction. So with that, um, I'm gonna go ahead and say this meeting is adjourned.